Gentlemen, to the Planning Commission, can I ask you all to stand please and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I'm sorry.
Excuse me. Excuse me. I have to do a roll call first. I have to do a roll call first. Clerk, call the board, other one, please.
Here.
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 Mr. Onza?
Here.
Mr. Hesley?
Here.
Now, would you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic over which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, this is the time in the agenda for public comments. Anyone in the audience that would like to speak on a topic that is not on the agenda today? I have no speaker cards, so I assume we have no public comments. Item number five, case number PL 18-0085, Fitzgerald Ranches staff.
Good morning, Chair Rodriguez, members of the commission. My name is Justin Byrdline, and I am the LCA program planner for the planning division. Oops, how did you go backwards? Also here this morning is Matty Hendrick, chief appraiser for the assessor's office, if your commission should have any questions on what the assessor's office does with the LCA program. The item before your commission today is case number PL 18-0085, and the request is for the expansion of existing agricultural preserve and the execution of one new ten-year open space wildlife habitat area land conservation act contract. The Land Conservation Act was adopted by state legislature in 1965. The purpose of this act is the preservation of open space and agricultural lands within the state of California. This is done between an agreement, a voluntary agreement, between private property owners and local jurisdictions. In exchange for restricting the uses of the properties to either open space or agricultural uses, the property owner receives a reduced property tax assessment. The county of Ventura implemented this program in 1969 and has administered this program every year since. Currently, there are 1,081 active LCA contracts totaling approximately 189,000 acres in Ventura Currently, Ventura County offers three different types of LCA contracts. There are crop production contracts of 10 or 20-year terms, animal husbandry or grazing contracts of 10-year terms, and open space wildlife habitat contracts of 10 or 20-year terms. All LCA contracts have to be approved by the Board of Supervisors. Crop production and husbandry and grazing contracts have to receive recommendation to the Board of Supervisors from the Agricultural Policy Advisory Committee, and open space wildlife habitat contracts must receive your planning commission, yes, Commissioner White.
Can I ask a question? Could you, what's FSZA?
That is an acronym for Farmland Security Zone area, and that is a layer that is placed on a property that has a 20-year contract term. Those have to be in what is called state prime land, and that receives additional assessment value deductions. And so those are only available for crop production and wildlife habitat areas because only prime ag is applicable in those zones. You can't have grazing on prime designated islands. So open space wildlife habitat contracts must receive recommendation from your commission to the Board of Supervisors, and that's why we're here today. The project site is located at the base of the Canejo grade in the unincorporated area of Ventura County. The site is comprised of five APNs and two legal lots. These are some site photos that were taken in June of this year. This image is of the project site looking north to the project site from roughly the south or the north side of Highway 101. This is from the project site looking south towards Highway 101. You could see the Canejo grade and the drainage that runs down from there. This is from the project site looking east, and this is a general view of the project site. As I mentioned, the applicant is requesting the expansion of existing agricultural preserve and the execution of one new 10-year open space wildlife habitat LCA contract. This is the proposed LCA contract boundary. Open space contracts are unique in that the contract boundary does not have to mirror that of the underlying legal lots, which is why you don't see contiguous contract boundary. The parcel in between the two proposed contract boundaries is the Camarillo Grove Park, which was donated to the county by the applicant's family, the Fitzgerald Ranches. That project or that parcel is not included in the contract boundary. However, access to the site is through a shared driveway through the park. So in order for staff to make recommendations to your commission and AIPAC and ultimately the Board of Supervisors, the following findings have to be met. All LCA contracts have to be located entirely within an existing ag preserve. If the ag preserve is not on the property, a new one can be designated by the board, or in this case, if there is an existing ag preserve that is adjacent to the property, that agricultural preserve can be expanded. Ag Preserve 53-9 is currently 304 acres, and if approved, would increase into about 1,226 All LCA contracts must have a general plan land use designation of either open space or agricultural. The subject property has a general plan land use designation of open space and is zoned open space 160 acre minimum parcel size. For open space wildlife habitat LCA contracts, the board must designate the property as a wildlife habitat area. The green-blue hatching that is shown on here is the regional wildlife corridor layer of the RMA GIS data base. That layer was developed as part of the South Coast Missing Linkages Project, which identified location of critical movement areas for wildlife habitat. This information was included in the initial study assessment guidelines, which was approved by the Board of Supervisors. The proposed project site is located entirely within this layer, and therefore, the board has designated this area as a wildlife habitat area. This is an image, a scaled back image, of the RMA GIS wildlife corridor layer. As you could see, the green area is the wildlife corridor. The hatched area is protected areas. Those are easements, parks, and other areas. And the wildlife corridor extends from the Tierra Hada Valley down through Somis, Camarillo, and into the Santa Monica Mountains and down to Point Magu. The project site is located approximately here, and that area is the Camarillo Grove Park. So it is the only part of the wildlife corridor in this area that does cross Highway 101, so it is a critical linkage area.
Located where?
It's right there. And so that, this area right there, that is the area that's excluded from the contract boundary. That's the Camarillo Grove Park. So all uses on the property have to be compatible with open space wildlife habitat LCA contracts, which includes the natural, or the preservation of natural habitats, and in this case, wildlife corridors. The project site is approximately 922 acres in size and is comprised mainly of mountainous, undeveloped terrain. Approximately seven acres of the project site is utilized as a horse boarding facility, which is a non-agricultural use as defined in the non-coastal zoning ordinance. The horse boarding facility does utilize several miles of trails that goes outside of the development envelope of the facility. However, those paths of recreational activities such as hiking or trail riding are uses that are compatible with open space LCA contracts. In staff's processing of this application, we identified roughly 57 acres of active crop production that were excluded from the contract boundary because agricultural uses and crop production uses are not compatible with open space LCA contracts. And finally, the property must have significant biological resources. The property is located entirely within that regional wildlife corridor and is a critical linkage from, or critical linkage for wildlife that extends from Tierra Hada Valley down to Point Magu and the Santa Monica Mountains. Additionally, there are large stands of cactus, prickly pear cactus, which are home to the cactus wren, which is a state-identified, state species of special concern. Our staff biologist, Abigail Convery, has identified that the project site is most likely also home to mountain lions, badgers, mule deer, California thrashers, to name a few. This project does qualify for a category, Class 17 categorical exemption from SEQA environmental review. And staff is recommending approval based on the findings that were made, and at this point, no action will be taken other than your recommendation, your commission's recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. And that concludes my presentation. I am available for any questions that you may have.
Commissioner White?
We need to do disclosures before we begin.
That's right. Do we have to do disclosures on this, counsel? It's just ordinance.
Oh, yeah, you can. Why not?
Mike?
Yes, go ahead and do it.
Okay. Disclosures.
I have no disclosures.
I have no disclosures, other than the fact that I have driven by it, including this morning.
No disclosures.
I have no disclosures.
No disclosures.
Okay. Questions to staff? Commissioner White?
I see this is for a 10-year term, and as I understand, it could be 10 or 20. Is that right?
Commissioner White, that is correct. That is up to the applicant to determine what length of contract they want, and it's either 10 or 20-year term, so they chose 10 for whatever reason.
And they have been 10 years up till now?
There's the option of 10 or 20 years for these types of contracts. For grazing, it's limited to 10-year contracts.
So right now, they're on a 10-year contract?
If approved, yes, they will be on a 10-year contract.
Oh, okay, they don't have one yet?
They do not. This is a new, a new LCA contract.
Oh, I see. Thank you.
Any other questions, staff? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Discussion, or motion?
Commissioner White.
I have no speaker cards.
I would move staff recommendation.
Second.
A motion of second.
Oh, we're moving too fast, sorry. All right. Commissioner, it's, I'm sorry, the second. Shall I see?
Thank you for a succinct and educational presentation.
Yeah, good job.
I'd like to thank the applicant, too. Okay, item number six, case number PL 16-0101, Rincon Peak, Derma Group for American Tower.
Good morning, Chairman Rodriguez and members of the commission. I'm Becky Linder, here to present to you the staff report for American Tower, CUP PL 16-0101, a wireless communication facility on Rincon Peak, Ventura. Wait, that's a pointer. The facility is located at 10151 Ocean View Drive in Ventura. It's approximately .09 acres of a 640-acre property located 1 and 1/2 miles north of Pacific Coast Highway between Muswell Shoals and Rincon Beach, right up here. And it's also about eight miles west of the city of Ventura, in the unincorporated area of the county. The proposed project has a general plan land use designation of open space and zoning designation of open space 160-acre lot size minimum, and the project boundary is located outside of the coastal zone boundary, which is down here, coastal zone boundary. The project is up here, and the CUP boundary is up here, up at the top of the parcel. The requested CUP would authorize the continued use of a wireless communication facility, a non-stealth facility owned and operated by American Tower, for an additional 10-year period. The facility was previously authorized under CUP LU 06-0023 for a 10-year period, which ended in August 3 of 2016. Subject to the zoning ordinance, Section 8105-4 permitted uses, the continuation of a non-stealth wireless communication facility in the open space zone district requires a planning commission approval. The wireless facility consists of the continued use of an existing bi-level 110-foot tall, 60-foot tall lattice communication tower, various pertinent structures and equipment within a 4,075-square-foot lease area. The project also includes the removal of an existing 40-foot tall wooden tower and removal of an existing 391-square-foot lease, excuse me, shelter building. The facility is accessed off of an existing public and private road, State Highway 101, to an unnamed private road. I'll just go back so you can see, right here, from 101, 101 up through here to the project As I said, the facility is owned and operated by American Tower LLC, with equipment installed on the towers owned by various tenants. The applicant submitted the application, the permit, current permit request, in July of 2016. However, the permit was on hold for approximately one year while the applicant considered the technical feasibility of removal of the 40-foot wooden tower and the removal of the 391-square-foot equipment building and consolidation of the equipment onto the bi-level tower that is to remain. The revised project drawings were subsequently submitted to staff and prepared and submitted and to the planning department around May of 2018. This is an overview of the site plan. It shows the lease area and the project area up here with my pointer. This site shows the site compound layout. The layout also includes the location of the existing backup generator and the propane tank over here in the circle. This is a slide of the elevations of the 110-foot tall, 60-foot tall bi-level lattice communication tower with existing antennas that reach to a maximum height of 117 feet tall, and the 1,000-square-foot equipment building to remain within the lease area. The slide shows the 40-foot wooden communication tower to be removed and the 391-square-foot shelter to be removed. I'm going to discuss the propagation maps. They show that the existing wireless facility fills an in-service, an in-vehicle service gap along stretch of Highway 150, which is along here, from Lake Casitas along Casitas Pass Road, going west above Muswell Shoals and PCH down here. The propagation map shows that the existing facility provides indoor coverage for surrounding developments and that a lower overall tower elevation of 50 feet will not provide the necessary coverage for adequate service. Thus, the overall height of 117 feet 60-foot tower is required for adequate service and coverage that cannot be achieved with one or more stealth facilities. And this is, this shows the propagation map of the wireless facility with the areas of no or marginal coverage. White is no coverage, and gray areas are marginal with average coverage in the yellow. Give you a little history of the project, I'll try to be brief, and the environmental document. On January 19, 25, 1989, the planning director granted a modification of CUP 3690 to authorize the continued operation of the existing wireless facility, which included the construction of the 110-foot lattice tower and the 25-foot by 40-foot masonry building for a four-year period, ending September 1992. The planning director adopted a negative declaration at that time, which evaluated the environmental impacts of the wireless facility, and the negative declaration is attached as Exhibit 9 of your staff report. On May 22, whoops, let me go back. On May 22 of 1992, the planning director granted a permit adjustment of CUP 3690, which authorized the continued operation of the wireless facility for an additional 10-year period, ending in September 2002. And then, in January of 1994, granted another modification of the CUP to authorize construction of the 60-foot tall lattice communication tower attached to the existing 110-foot tower, and a new 25-by-42-square-foot equipment building for a 10-year period, ending in January of 2004. However, the new 60-foot attached lattice was constructed, however, the 25-by-42-foot equipment building was not constructed, and subsequently, the CUP 3690 expired. And then, in August of 2006, the planning director granted another CUP LU 060023 to authorize the continued operation of the existing wireless facility for a 10-year period, which ended August 3, 2016. And the applicant submitted their proposed project application prior to that expiration date. So none of the conditions described in the SEQA guidelines, Section 15162, called for the preparation of a subsequent negative declaration, have occurred. The addendum to the negative declaration in Exhibit 10 of the staff report includes a description of the changes or additions that are necessary to the negative declaration and a discussion of why none of the conditions described in the SEQA guidelines exist, which require the preparation of an EIR or subsequent ND. In summary, the proposed project only involves minor changes in the operation of an existing permitted facility, and no additional significant impacts have been identified. I'm going to present the visual impact analysis. This is a project site aerial photo, and this slide shows, this was provided by the applicant. The yellow pin is where the tower is in the facility, and the site is located, as you know, on top of Rincon Mountain, and it's located adjacent to other wireless facilities. And it is, as I said, 1.5 miles north of State Highway 101 and the Pacific Coast Highway. I drove past it the other day, and I could only, it's in between two hills, and I could only see it for a brief, like, maybe three seconds, and I was the passenger in the car. You have to be looking for it, and I was looking for it. But other than that, it's not visible off of Pacific Coast Highway, because there's other mountains right in front of it, adjacent to it. So it's like two mountains here, and then it's going to sit back right there, but there's a little gap. This slide shows the existing bi-level tower with the antennas that reach the maximum height of 117 feet tall and the shelter below it that will remain. And this slide shows the bi-level tower in the background with the 40-foot wooden tower and structure to be removed, and this is a view from the south. And that's in the foreground, obviously. So the design of the project involves the continued preparation, the continued operation of an existing wireless facility, a bi-level lattice communication tower, and equipment shelter for both public and private uses. It also includes the removal of an existing 40-foot tall wooden communication tower and its 391-square-foot equipment building, and then consolidation of the equipment onto the bi-level tower. The upper portion of the bi-level tower structure is used by public safety and public utility agencies, including CHP, California Highway Patrol, which owns antenna equipment located at three different heights on the tower, which include 103 feet rad center, 73 feet, and 43 feet rad centers. The CHP commented in their email dated August 6, 2006, that the proposed communication tower structure height is necessary for them to achieve sufficient elevation to provide adequate radio communication to and from the site. If the towers were redesigned as a 50-foot tower or even two 50-feet towers, that would be needed to accommodate all of the existing tenants' equipment. It still will not be tall enough to achieve the minimum height required for adequate service and coverage for indoor customers, motorists, public utility, and public safety, which travel along segments of the state highways, 101, 1, and Highway 150. So based on the above discussion, in Section E7 of your staff report, including Section 8107-45 for F5C of the non-coastal zoning ordinance, the required findings to approve a non-stealth facility greater than 50 feet in height can be made. Oh, I need to go to go drink water. The proposed project is The proposed project is consistent with all applicable general plan policies. It is found to be compatible with adjacent land uses and is consistent with the findings of the non-coastal zoning for a wireless facility CUP. No potential, potentially significant environmental issues have been brought to the county's attention. The Planning Division provided legal notice regarding the Planning Commission hearing today to property owners within 1,250 feet of the subject project site due to the large size of the parcels and the adjacent areas. And in addition, a legal ad was published in the Ventura County Star, and to date, no comments were received. Staff recommends that you take the recommended actions listed on Page 15 of the staff report and grant the CUP subject to the conditions of approval. That concludes my presentation. The applicant's representative is here to answer any questions that you may have about the wireless communication facility. Are there any questions of staff?
Commissioner Dukas.
Disclosure, yeah.
Megan, can I have disclosures, please? Commissioner White.
Is...
Excuse me. We're going to do disclosures first.
I'm sorry, no disclosure.
I'm sorry, couldn't hear you. No questions?
We're doing disclosures.
We're doing disclosures right now. I have no disclosures.
I have no disclosure.
No disclosures.
I have no disclosures.
Okay. Questions for the commission? Commissioner White.
Sorry. Is, are they required to have a blinking red light at the top of this tower?
No, they are not tall enough to have the blinking red light. I believe you have to be at least 200 feet for the FCC, you're thinking of the...
So, there is no...
No.
No light there?
There's no blinking light on the tower.
Commissioner Dukas.
I just have one question. How much time do they have to remove that unnecessary tower, the 40-foot tower?
Good question. I would need to check the conditions of approval to see how long they have for their zoning clearance, and then that's how I would know.
Because I think it's terrific that you guys are doing that because what ends up happening is these, you know, because of policy, we have colocation, and it ends up looking like, you know, it's very unsightly.
Yes.
And having it removed is a step in the right direction that I find most welcome.
Great. Yes, I agree completely. In Exhibit 11 of your conditions of approval, under Condition Number 4, Time Limits for the Wireless Facility on Page 3, we require the zoning clearance for construction, so they would need to complete all the prior to zoning clearance for construction requirements. And we, and construction includes the demolition of the tower.
Sorry, tell me, tell me again where that is?
Okay. Page 3, Conditions of Approval, which is Exhibit 11. And it's Condition Number 4, Time Limits for Wireless Communication Facilities. A, construction demolition. And so, they are required to obtain the zoning clearance for construction demolition, and they have 180 days from the granting approval of this CUP, but, and then they're also allowed 180-day extension. So, approximately a year, I mean, if they need it, but no more, it wouldn't be no more than a year. But hopefully, within six months, they would complete all their prior to's, which...
But, but in a year, we could...
Expect.
Expect that it will, okay.
Yeah, because they have to go to Building and Safety and get the building permit for the demolition and take time to go through plan check and then get, get the work done and, yeah.
Excellent. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, staff? Do we want to hear from the applicant? Any questions of the applicant? No, great, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Commission, discussions? Recommendation? Or motion?
Move staff recommendations.
Okay, we're done. Thank you, Becky. Are you also doing the next one?
I am doing the next one.
Okay. Item number, item number seven, case number PL16-0102, Red Mountain.
Good morning again. I'm Becky Linder. As you know, here to present the next staff report, CUP PL16-0102 for an American Tower, a wireless facility located on Red Mountain in Ventura. This project site is located at 1750 Casitas Vista Road in Ventura on approximately 0.09 acres of a 381-acre property near the intersection of Red Mountain Road, excuse me, Red Mountain Fire Road and Utility Road. Right in there. I have a better location map for you next. It's approximately 1.3 miles south of Lake Casitas and 1 and 1/2 miles west of Highway 33. Is this Highway 33? Lake Casitas? In the incorporated area of Ventura County. The project has a general plan land use designation of open space, and it is subject to the Ojai Valley Area Plan and has an area plan land use designation of open space, 80-acre minimum lot size. It also has a zoning designation of 80, open space 80-acre and open space 80 acres SRP, which is, as you know, Scenic Resource Protection Overlay. This requested CUP would authorize the continued use and operation of an existing non-stealth wireless communication facility owned and operated by American Tower for an additional 10-year period. The facility was previously authorized by CUP LUO 6-0024 for a 10-year period ending August 3rd, 2016. Subject to the zoning ordinance, Section 8105-4, permitted uses, as I was saying in the other project, the continued use of a non-stealth wireless facility in the open space zone requires a Planning Commission approval. The facility consists of the continued use of 120-foot-tall lattice communication tower with various pertinent equipment and structures within a 4,225-square-foot leased area. The project also includes the removal of a 43-foot-tall wooden communication tower. They couldn't remove, they said they didn't want to remove the shelter structure that was underneath it because they needed it for other equipment. So, this project is a little different than the Rincon Peak where they removed the tower and the shelter. This one is only removing the tower. Okay. The facility is accessed from existing public and private roads, Red Mountain Road, Red Mountain Fire Road, a public road, and to Utility Road, which is a private road. And the wireless facility is owned and operated by American Tower LLC with equipment installed on the tower owned by various tenants. The applicant submitted the current permit request, PL16-0102, on July 29th of 2016, prior to its expiration. The permit application was on hold for approximately one year as well, while the applicant considered the technical feasibility of consolidating the two existing communication towers to one tower and removal, with the removal of the one 43-foot-tall wooden tower. Then, the applicant subsequently prepared and submitted revised project drawings to the Planning Department in May of 2018. This is a slide of the overall site plan. It shows an overhead view of the leased area and the project site. This is the site compound layout, which includes the location of the backup generator and propane tank, which are over here, these two items on the right. This slide shows the 120-foot-tall lattice tower, communication tower, and the existing antennas, with existing antennas, and the equipment building to remain within the fenced leased area. And this slide shows the elevation and picture of the 43-foot-tall wooden communication tower, which will be removed, and the 356-square-foot equipment building below it, which will remain within the fenced leased area. Do the, here's a little bit of the background on the permit and environmental document discussion. On January 14th, 1987, the Planning Director granted CUP 4123, Modification Number 1, to authorize the construction of the 120-foot-tall lattice antenna support tower, a generator with an LPG tank and pad and a 1,600-square-foot cement block building to house an unmanned radio relay station, is what they called it, back then, for a 20-year period, ending January 14th, 2006. The Planning Director approved a negative declaration at that time that evaluated the environmental impacts of the installation and operation of the subject wireless communication facility. This ND is attached as Exhibit 9 of your staff report. On August 3rd, 2006, the Planning Director granted CUP LU06-0024 to authorize the continued operation of the existing wireless facility for an additional 10-year period ending August 3rd, 2016. None of the conditions described in the SEQA Guidelines, Section 15162, calling for the preparation of a subsequent negative declaration, have occurred. The addendum to the negative declaration is Exhibit 10 of your staff report, includes a description of the changes or additions that are necessary to the negative declaration and a discussion of why none of the conditions described in the SEQA Guidelines exist, which require the preparation of an EIR or a subsequent negative declaration. So, in summary, the project involves only minor changes in the operation of the existed permitted facility and no additional significant impacts have been identified. This is the visual impact, these are slides of the visual impact analysis prepared or submitted to me by the applicant. This slide shows the photo legend for the visual impact analysis. The photos were taken of the wireless facility were taken at five different locations from the project site, and those include Santa Ana Road, Casita Vista Road off-ramp, Casitas Vista Road, and Canada Largo Road, and Ventura Road. As you will see from the following slides, the wireless facility is only slightly visible from Casitas Vista Road and is not visible from Santa Ana Road or Ventura Road. This slide is showing you the existing wireless facility in the background from Casita Vista Road off-ramp, which I can barely see it, it's way out there. And there is another tower located, one other tower located in the area of that tower. This is a view from Casita Vista Road. The tower is only slightly visible, is a very small line. You have to have really good eyes to see it. I don't. And this is another view from Canada Largo and Ventura Roads of the site. And then, lastly, this is a second view from Canada Largo Road and Ventura Road. The tower is not visible from Canada Largo Road and Ventura Roads. One second. So dry. The project involves the continued operation and use of an existing 120-foot-tall lattice tower with equipment and shelters for both public and private use. It also includes the removal of an existing 43-foot wooden communication tower and the consolidation of antenna equipment onto the existing 120-foot-tall communication tower. The upper portion of the existing 120-foot-tall lattice tower is used by the U.S. Navy Missile Defense Center and public agencies, including Southern California Gas Company, and those are at rad center 100 feet and 114 feet, respectively, measured to the top of the And, hold on. SoCal Gas commented in their letter dated August 1st, 2016, that the proposed communication tower height is necessary to achieve sufficient elevation to provide radio communication to and from the site. If the wireless facility was redesigned as a 40-foot tower, which is required by the Ojai Area Scenic Plan Resources Policy 1.6.2-3, or a 50-foot tower, or even two 50-foot towers, that would be needed to accommodate all of the existing tenants, it would not be tall enough to achieve the minimum height required for adequate service and coverage for indoor customers, motorists, Public Utility, and Public Safety vehicles traveling along segments of Highway 33 and Highway 101. Based on the discussion in Section E7 of your staff report, including Section 8107-45.4F5C of the Non-Coastal Zoning Ordinance, the required findings, including to approve the non-stealth facility greater than 50 feet in height can be made. The proposed project is consistent with all applicable general plan policies. The proposed project is found to be compatible with adjacent land uses and is consistent with the required findings for a wireless facility CUP. No potentially significant environmental issues have been brought to the county's attention. The Planning Division provided legal notice regarding the hearing to property owners within 2,500 feet of the subject site, and in addition, a legal ad was published in the Ventura County Star. Staff recommends that request that you take the recommended actions listed on Page 17 and 18 of your staff report and grant CUP, the CUP subject to conditions of approval. That concludes my presentation. And again, the applicant is here, applicant's representative is here to answer any questions your commission may have about the operations of the wireless facility. Are there any questions of staff?
Commissioner, disclosures, please?
No disclosures.
I have no disclosures.
Mr. Kessler?
No disclosures.
Mr. Honsdahl?
No disclosures.
I have no disclosures. Questions of staff? Commissioner Dukas.
When was a scenic resources protection overlay put on this area?
Oh, good question.
How is it consistent with the SRP overlay? How is it consistent with the SRP overlay?
I believe that it would be consistent because this site is existing, it was previously permitted, and it had the Scenic Resources Protection Overlay at that time, too.
It did.
In the LU-06-0023. I don't know the date of the inception of the Scenic Resources Protection Overlay Zone. It would be in the GIS viewer, county viewer, maybe my manager can help me.
Commissioner Adukas and commissioners, we would have to go back and take a look, but it was, you know, something probably quite a long time ago. And what Becky was describing with respect to the tower and the Ojai Valley Area Plan policy, which is intended to enforce the SRP intent, because the tower does accommodate public safety providers that have to have their communication antennas and facilities above the 40 feet, in this case, well above 100 feet in order to reach their service area, we found that it is a necessary facility and therefore can be found consistent with those policies.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions of staff? Okay. Discussion.
Can we move the staff recommendation?
Give her a second.
Go ahead.
Motion, second. Okay, thank you, Becky.
Okay, next item on the agenda, number eight, discussion report by the planning director on board actions and other matters, followed by items the planning commission may want to introduce. Staff.
Good morning, Chair Rod Regretts, members of the commission. Kim had a prior engagement and could not sit today for the planning commission report back, but I do understand that you had a report back regarding American hay, and we've since, Kim sent over the notice of violation that was issued last week, and then I followed up with a email and then a memorandum this morning, of that email this morning. So if you have any questions, I'm not sure, maybe Jeff can tell me how far we can discuss this report back.
I mean, it depends on the questions you can, you know, offer, clarifying questions or remarks, but we shouldn't go into much detail.
So if you have any additional questions regarding the status of American hay, we're more than happy to answer those.
Commissioner Austin.
It was my understanding that as a result of the failure to comply, they were going to have to go back to six feet, and I didn't see that in what you sent to me. Six foot was not mentioned. I was just talking about the height of the wall, is that six feet?
So the hay is being stored above the wall, as you saw in the pictures that were provided by the Burgess's, and they, if they can reconfigure the way to store hay is behind the screens, both the mesh and the vegetative screen, then they've accomplished the objective of the condition. However, that gap really prevents them from reconfiguring it, because if you look at the gap at any angle, you can't, you're not supposed to see the hay. And so the notice of violation conveys that, saying, hey, if you can figure out a way to reconfigure your hay so they can't see it, by all means, we won't limit you to the wall, but unless, you know, if we see that, then you haven't met the objective. Now, as I mentioned in my memorandum, we are working on a solution. We've been working with Kathy Nolan, the landscape architect who provided the plans, and we've met with Building and Safety, and they're providing options for the structural engineer to consider. They have been very responsive, and we are hopeful that we'll have something from Building and Safety on Friday, if he accepts the structural engineer's design. In the interim, Peter Goldenring and Danny Miles have inquired if they can put a couple more fern pines in that gap, and instead of putting them in the ground where they lose that height, they would keep them in the box, and if necessary, put the boxes on pallets so that the foliage of those fern pines could block the gap. Now, I haven't seen that, and planning is supposed to do a site inspection to see if that is a good interim solution. If it's not, then they're supposed to make sure that no hay is within that gap. Now, there is a process with a notice of violation, they can appeal that violation, and Peter may appeal it, and that's why we're hopeful that we have this interim solution with the box trees, so we don't have to go through the process of processing a violation and then coming before you again. One other thing I can say, I have been in contact with the Burgess's and the Lambert's and the other neighbor, I forget her name, pretty much every day, and keeping them apprised of our progress.
No end in sight.
I hope not. I really want a solution to this, and I think everybody involved wants a solution as quickly as possible.
Just for clarification, in the hearing, we, it was made very clear to us that whatever they were going to do as a solution was going to cover all of the wall so that there wasn't a gap. What concerns me is why is there a gap? And if we conditioned that approval to have to remove the hay to six feet, why is that not being inserted at this point in time? Just for clarification.
So, the gap appeared after the mesh was installed, and on the plans, the plans show existing vegetation overlapping the mesh screen that they installed. And there was some confusion because Danny Miles had trimmed some of those fern pines that were leaning over his wall, and Ms. Lambert had hired a landscape architect to round out the hedges. And so there was some confusion as to how much was trimmed. When we look at the plans, we did not agree that approximately 14 feet had been trimmed, and thus, the, there was an, excuse me, an inaccuracy in the plan. So I went back and I said, did your surveyor shoot the extended existing vegetation? And I didn't get an affirmative answer. I don't believe the existing vegetation was surveyed. And so when we look at plans, we rely on what we're seeing, and when it didn't get constructed per plan, then we immediately address that.
Okay.
Thank.
Thank you.
I have a question.
All right, okay.
Would it make sense to put this on the agenda for the next meeting in the case that this doesn't get resolved?
We'd be happy to report back with this, our progress on this, absolutely.
Instead of a report back, when we have a report back, I'm sorry. When we have a report back, there's no action that we can take, and we're limited on how far we can go with this. So a report back is not sufficient, in my opinion.
Right, well, here's the situation, the planning divisions issued a notice of violation, and so the situation's either going to be resolved in the neighbors' and we think everyone's interest, like your commission wants, or there's going to be an appeal of the NOV, and so then it's going to come before your commission at this point. And so the problem with agendizing an item on this matter now is that there's this NOV outstanding, and so if we, I'm not sure what the, so there's a couple options, you know, one, like I said, it's going to come before you on an appeal of an NOV, or two, if your commission wants to somehow modify or revoke, then that's a separate issue and there's a separate standard there. But there's not a whole lot you can do, you know, besides those two boxes, because the permit's been issued, and I know you want to understand what's going on, and that's what planning telling, is telling you, but we need to kind of fit inside a box of what actions you can legally take based on the situation we're under. And so, I mean, it sounds like it's being resolved, again, if they challenge the NOV, that is what will come before you first. If they don't challenge it, then it sounds like they're on track to remedy the situation. And so besides that, there's not, I'm not sure what other action you could really take.
Not, not to be argumentative, but I distinctly remember asking if six weeks was sufficient, and here we are, months later, and it's still not done. It doesn't look good.
Right, no, yeah, and I'm not, you're not arguing with me, and I'm not going to argue with you either, you know, it is what it is.
Commissioner Austin.
How long does Peter have to appeal?
10 days from, when was it issued?
September 5th. That's the final day he'll be able to appeal, which I believe is a Wednesday.
And so, yeah, so if he does appeal, then I'm assuming planning vision will get it before you ASAP. It's a top priority.
If he does not appeal?
Yeah.
What the?
If he doesn't.
Staff tries to work with him, and at some point?
No, okay, yeah, so that's a good question. So the NOV says that, and this gets to the six-foot point, and I can discuss this because it's all in the NOV, it's all, it's all public, we're not prejudicing anyone that's not here. The NOV says that, you know, as Jennifer mentioned, there's a gap in the screening, and that was apparently based on a misunderstanding with the landscape plan that was presented. So the NOV says, as of today, the permittee has to take all the hay down from those big piles, and so they're below the existing wall, and so you basically can't see them through the gap. And so they have to keep that hay down, so you can't see it through the gap until they remedy the situation. And so as of today, according to the NOV, well, the NOV hasn't formally taken effect because we're in the appeal period, but if they don't appeal, then, and really technically as of today, they're supposed to have taken the hay down so the neighbor can't see it through the gap. And so that's the first step for them. The second step is if they could come up with a way to extend the screening to close off the gap, then planning will work with them on that, then they can raise the hay back up. But the bottom line is, the hay has to go below the wall so the neighbors can't see it because of the gap that the permittee created, and then, but then the hay could go back up if they come up with a fix. And so it's, we, planning gave them notice and a plan to basically bait it right away, and so we're doing everything that we can.
Well, the best you're going to get is a report back, it sounds like.
Anything further to report?
Not that I know of.
No. Are there any items the planning commission may want to introduce?
I would like to inquire of.
Speak to your mic.
I would like to inquire of county council, what is the status of the procedure for forcing people to file documents in a timely fashion before a hearing? That it becomes more important every time we have a problematic matter where I have 600 pages to read in three or four days, and then we show up, and then there's more. I understand why people play the game, it's, maybe it's to force a continuance, or maybe just to get something of record that you don't have time to respond to, but I, as a planning commissioner, am sick and tired of being force-fed to the last minute.
Right, yeah. Too bad Kim's not here, I helped planning draft up the document submittal procedures that your commission approved a while back, and so the ball's kind of in planning's court, I need to follow up with Kim about posting those and how they're going to be publicized. So, you know, wish Kim was here, but I'll talk to her about it, and she or I will report back to you next time. The rules are there, we just need to publicize them now.
So we will get a report back at the next meeting, please.
I'll be sure to talk to Kim.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? I would just say that the clerk handed me a couple of letters this morning, addressed to both Supervisor Foy and myself as a chair, both in opposition to the proposed wireless corridor ordinance. It's come and gone here, obviously it's going to go in front of the board, and Supervisor Foy is getting a copy, so I will just make mention of that, I'll give them back to the clerk. Any other items?
When is that coming before us? Do you know, Jennifer?
God, I wish I brought my calendar down, maybe I have it right here, hold on just a second. Okay. Let's see what we got here. 20th of September? I don't see it. I see the 25th. Oh, habitat connectivity overlay? I see it going to the Board of Supervisors on October 30th.
And to us?
I don't see it on my, September 20th is what Megan is saying? Okay.
Okay, include these now.
I'm on this calendar.
Include these with the, whatever documents we have.
Thank you.
Sorry about that.
Okay, no other items, no other, Commissioner Austin.
Is the joint meeting being continued to November 6th?
That's correct, because I just jumped on the slot for October 16th on another item.
Okay, no other questions or comments, we're adjourned.